Ready?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Alright, uh, the manifest is going around. Um, we need approval of the minutes for April ninth for the public hearing and the public and non-public minutes also of April ninth. I'll make that motion. I will second. Any corrections to know? I think I had one. Nobody else has any? Let me just find out. So on. The, under the school board meeting on April ninth. On page two, under the superintendent's report, it said the whole fund, it should be the halt with a T instead of a D. Get that Maria?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was all I had. So, um, any more discussion on those? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Alright, citizens comments? Anybody have anything? Does that mean they need to say to us at this point in the meeting? Leah? I can tell you something to say.
I know she does.
I'm just gonna ask her to keep her voice down.
And I don't, is anybody online at this point Maria?
There is nobody online right now.
Alright, so leave that open until the end of the meeting here. Everybody is outside watching. Good for them. Beautiful before our next five days of rains. Alright, uh, student presentations, travel club. Is it a joint presentation about travel club and Sunnyside or is it travel club and Sunnyside?
They are separate. Maria, did you get Pamela's slide deck?
See Jess sent it to me, so I just need a quick minute to get it open here. I don't have access. I request access to it.
Is that for the travel club?
Yeah.
Do you wanna wait and, we wanna do Sunnyside first?
Hunter's gonna go solo on Sunnyside.
You didn't even tell me what I was here for.
Like you have a problem talking, this is a tiny work for you.
Could I just ask that if they do present, they can come up to sit at the microphone here?
You need to relax and calm down, you're being very disruptive. She's never coming back. She's legit, never. Do you have, do you or David wanna get started with it and then enter?
Are you showing our video?
It's in there, I didn't show it, but I just shared it with the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it, I don't have it.
Ready to go.
Lined up and our three board members here, have you seen, you've seen the video, I trust, can't lie to me.
She gets it in paper form, so she hasn't locked at the electronic.
You've not shown it to her. Show it to after.
I did not see it.
It was, it wasn't linked in the report? She gets it in paper version.
I like to highlight and I like to make notes. Me too.
Let's do this, it's, it's in my, uh, let me just give you the brief. I'll start off with just a brief, um, summary. Um, I quantify this as probably the best professional learning I've had in twenty years. Uh, when eight of us from the, the high school went to Sunnyside Unified School District in Tucson, Arizona. Uh, we were there for, it, it felt like eight weeks.
Yeah.
Uh, because of the time difference. Um, and we were there, uh, April twenty eighth to May second. Um, Ms. Roth went, Ms. Chirichella, Ms. Leonard, uh, Hunter, Colton, uh, Borntess over there and Ms. Anderson and Ms. Henlow. Um, we were not necessarily sitting in learning sessions in class being spoken at. There was a section of that on Tuesday at Central Office. But it was necessary because there was a ton of information for us to, to, to receive. The rest of the time we were re-immersed in the actual work, doing things. Uh, being involved by walking around, talking with students who were there, working together in teams. Uh, building plans, interacting with other educators and just learning a lot about learner agency. Um, we came back pretty impressed, not just with the progress that they've made. But, um, I came back impressed with how energized everybody in our team was and the amount of work that everybody did while we were out there. Um, is there a long day?
Hmm.
Um, and we're pretty well programmed, pretty much up to the minute. So, right down to the dinners and, and so. I, yeah, I would ask Hunter if you wanna come up and just give a student perspective of your experience. Can you stay awake that long buddy? You look tired.
Me?
Yeah.
He was mowing the lawn just ten minutes ago.
I love that. I noticed it's not my lawn.
Um, for a student perspective, I thought it was a blast. I mean, just to have that opportunity, I was presented the Thursday before you had left. Um, but we definitely, it, it opened up new doors. Like as a student, I didn't think we could have that way of teaching and the thought that teachers and students would work together for their learning and to like better theirs, themselves. And have more focused learning. So kids are actually wanting to learn about what they wanted to learn. So, I mean, I just, I think it opened like our eyes for how it can be done. Even with, they had what, three thousand kids in their high school? And yes, it's gonna be different because of the size and what we're working with, like with money and stuff. But I think with the steps we've presented in that PowerPoint, um, we can start going in the right direction at school.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. You know, and the whole point of learner agency is to have students take responsibility for their learning. And that's something that we learned about. We thought engagement was what we were looking for. And, uh, we learned very quickly that engagement is a part of agency, but is not agency. And so we learned about the difference between academic and agentic behaviors, that act of compliance. Uh, and we actually related that to our bravely work yesterday, when we talked about identifying oppression. And seeing that when students walk into a classroom and they just react to pure compliance. Of, I'm told to do this, I'm told to do that, I have to sit here, I can't talk, I have to do this and get the grade or else I'm in trouble. Is what we're trying to eliminate and take the hierarchy of, of teaching and learning and turning on its side. So that as Hunter said, having teachers and students walk beside each other and learn together and really build a relationship, learning relationship. So teachers know what interests students and can help motivate them to wanna learn more about whatever it is that, that class is offering. Um, I, I was just impressed with the leadership that everybody showed. There was that event on Tuesday at Central Office when we were in like roles, remember? And some, one person from each table had to be the spokesperson. And of course Hunter stood up, right? Ms. Roth stood up. Uh, Ms. Anderson spoke up. I delegated. Because there was a woman at, at our table who was really talkative and very energetic, to the point where you could see people with body language just push away from the table as she continued to talk. So I said. Yeah, I think we're gonna go ahead and nominate her to be the talking for us. So, um, and then just the rest of the time, how many friends did you make Hunter at other schools?
I mean, we all became friends, like the schools that came there, every student, they got along, especially the night we played pickleball. That was a great night. Oh, several times. But maybe Mr. Chirichella was one of them. Um, but even like the, like being on the campus, talking to those students that have gone past and having the other, um, student learners and ambassadors, um, like tell us how like their experiences with learning and how it's changed and the difference perspective they have.
Yeah.
And a lot of people.
I flew home with the Holyoke crew and, uh, some of my least favorite, uh, school, one of the least favorite schools I had, I won't name it. Uh, but the Holyoke crew was great. And he still buddies with him, still connected.
Yeah.
They were alright, I liked it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask a question there? Can you tell me like what is one thing that you think that we could implement? At Hennsfield, like what could, what could we, I mean, a lot of this stuff takes time and work, right? And a whole climate and culture change. But what's one thing that you saw that you think we could start working on and it wouldn't be a big shift for us?
Um, one thing that I've already seen, like I have a class with Ms. Chirichella and since we came back, she's like talked us into like what learner agency, learner agency is and being agentic and stuff like that. So she's already taking steps like that, she brought in, I don't know if this was planned before or after. But we had a, um, an ex teacher, but a retired teacher come in and show us a different way that like the lessons can be planned and it was more hands-on and working together as groups. So stuff like that we can already implement.
Yeah.
And she's doing it, so.
That's awesome.
Other questions? Ms. Roth, anything to wrap up?
She said a lot of the things that are in my report, um, I would just add that I think one of our first steps going into next year will be identifying the group of students that will be our first learning ambassadors. And, um, whether that comes out of Dr. Ryan's class or the group that Karen already has. Um, identifying some students that we can explicitly teach learner agency, um, and the building blocks of it. So that they can start demonstrating those behaviors for their peers and then hopefully it grows from there.
It was fun because on senior leadership team, we showed the video, we talked a lot about the trip. Uh, uh, Sossen shared that, like that Monday morning, the teachers ran into her office, like first thing to tell her everything that was going on, transformation was incredible. And then as we're sharing it in SLT, um, Molly was like, yes, please, elementary school, please sing my song. So again, using that as our work in Bravely yesterday, that, that through line that we talked about there bravely in the middle school redesign is gonna drive the elementary school to prepare students. And then middle school is gonna drive the high school to prepare to receive students. And that whole learner agency piece is gonna be pre-K through twelve over time. Uh, which we'll see tonight also in our strategic plan, when you talk about our draft, desire and outcome. So, uh, a lot of it is starting to come together, even though some things look like they're very different activities. There's a very strong bond between all of the activities that are taking place. So I think people are starting to, to see that, feel that. And this trip was actually one of those. Uh, one of those strong bonds, so.
I have a quick question. We talked about the bonds that, that you all made and all the friends that you still have from down there. How much of that, um, time that you spent together, do you think was, um, well-served or fostered? Having that friendship that we can then translate into doing the same type thing with our incoming Winchester students? So that they can have that bond and that same connection before they commit? Whether it's pickleball or whatever it is.
There's definitely things I saw that we could do with them, like the fishbowl with these, which is, would be easy to implement. And, um, letting, it was awesome.
For a young man's standpoint, was it funner or these old teasers? You can be honest.
Right, it was informative.
No, but I think it let us, you know, our thoughts out a lot better. And like especially when the conversation started going, I think it worked out a lot better.
You know, we're not allowed to talk.
Right, yeah.
And the prompts were heavy.
They were, they were weighted.
Right, and, and so the prompts were enough to cause teachers there to want to talk. Because it was about engagement and it was about ac- activity in class, it was about learning, it was about teaching style. And students were, were saying what they want as learners and it's not what they're getting from teachers. And so a lot of teachers, you could kinda.
Yeah.
See the jitteriness. And so it was tough. And then when they switched and, uh, and heard more about it and asked questions, that's when it really started to get fluid and everybody was kinda getting into it. I think we could do something fishbowl-y here with a very light prompt, more of the, the team building, right? The activities that, you know, I've heard already being described. Usually, yeah, I could absolutely use the, that as an activity. And a lot of outdoor stuff, a lot of running around, outdoor stuff. Did you guys win?
Yeah.
Out of wins. So now that we've nominated Colton to be the spokesperson for learning agency, all of next year. We were just kinda closing up our conversation, but Colton, it'd be great if you could share like your experience and what you thought of the trip and what was one good takeaway? What are you gonna put in that written reflection paper that's due Friday, my friend?
It's already written, it's done.
Yeah. I think one good takeaway was definitely the fishbowl. I really liked that. I think we should do that with our students instead. I think I had a really great time, it was a lot of fun seeing how they do their school, how it runs.
How would you define learner agency based on your experience?
Baseball mode right now. More how the student, like the student voice and how they learn.
So did you guys participate in a school day there? Did, did they participate in a school day, the students?
They did a lot of what we did, they were all in it.
We did all the same professional development together.
All together.
Which was very powerful.
Yeah, like for the day we were in school, we got to, it was, we did several things that day. We got to go into classrooms, speak to the students in proper classroom, great. See some really cool stuff, like they had a machine where our machinery.
Machining, yeah.
Yes, they were making golf clubs there. Like, um, they have a special weave in it that clicks if you swing it right. So it was like really cool, they're making stuff.
At their high school?
Yeah, they also had an opportunity to make, um, prosthetics. They were like, uh, printing prosthetics out of this material and, um, flying out and putting them on people.
And went to, well, some of their students went to Guatemala to fit. Fit for, fit recipients for these prosthetics that they made parts for.
So like, with talking with the students, they were really engaged with it because they had these opportunities to like further what they were doing.
Wow, that's, that's awesome.
And they do contract work out of that precision.
I know, I'm like, man.
They take orders and then they pay them and then they put in brand new machinery.
And they end with their associate's degree.
Oh, that, yeah, that was very.
They're there for four years. And one of the students was telling us that the expectation is that when you're in your fourth year of a program, you are teaching and helping the younger kids when they get stuck or when they're working through a problem. Um, because that is, you know, some of the highest form of learning is when you can teach it to somebody else. So that's an expectation when you get to the fourth year of that program.
That's cool.
Yeah, that was great.
The panel as well, student, which was super powerful too. Hearing about actual experiences and a very lively group of students.
In our panel, we had a, a student who had already graduated also, so it was nice to hear that perspective from being outside the school and how it's, how, what he learned in high school is helping him in college. So, that was nice.
I think the, the, the biggest takeaway that I have is I really wanna empower our students to feel like they can speak up. Um, and these students really have been put in that position, like they were taught directly about learner agency and then they started training them to give professional learning to teachers. Uh, and they were super comfortable when we were, um, having some of our sessions at, um, the hotel. They would come up to our table and ask like, what do you think, what's your, you know, your best highlight so far? Like they were coming up and just asking us adult strangers questions, um, and super comfortable with all the conversations. I thought that was impressive.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
Thanks gentlemen. Dr. Moe Hunter?
Yeah, go ahead and hose it off because I didn't the other day.
I did see that.
And I apologize.
Alright, so now we have the travel club, are we ready for that? Maria, are you ready for travel club?
Yep, I'm just sharing it real quick, Kara. Can you see that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Justin.
We recently went to Puerto Rico, the travel. Um, it was from April twenty second to April twenty eighth. It's a lot of fun.
Where's this view from?
That same one.
Yeah.
Could we move a mic closer to everyone speaking?
You guys are crying out.
Yeah.
Is your mic?
Is it on?
It's on now. Yeah.
You can probably hold it if you want.
Or get it closer, just pull it closer. There you go.
You can go to the next slide, Maria.
Um, this was our first day. When we arrived, we were already all pretty tired because we were like in the cafeteria. But the first thing we did was went on a walking tour of Old San Juan. And then we, she all, our tour director just let us roam free in the streets to find lunch, which was interesting. And then after we all finally made it back on our own, after following like a pin on our maps. We had, went to dinner and then after that we went to the hotel where they were.
Did you have to basically speak Spanish the entire time when you were on your own?
No, we didn't really talk anymore.
How did you food? But like, how did you, how did you order your food?
Yeah, we are spoiled.
That's not the point. But it wasn't like great English, but it was understandable.
I was hoping you'd speak Spanish.
Um, so day two, we went to the rainforest. Um, and after that we went to Willow Beach, which was really nice. We got some free time there, about two hours. Um, and then we left and we went to dinner, which was nice. We had something different every night. We got to like pick what we wanted, me and Mia mostly eat like American food.
Didn't venture too much.
Um, I kinda wish we did, but we did not in the moment. But it was a nice and relaxing day.
Looks like beautiful weather.
Yeah.
Um, this was our third day, we went into the caves, they were really cool.
Is this what we FaceTimed you?
Uh, yeah.
You were.
We probably run away.
Yeah.
But, um, we saw bats and a snake fell on our head.
I would have been on your bike. Like legit on them, like touch, touch her.
That's better than bear head.
After we went to the caves, we went to like a little mall outlet place and we all like went, went shopping and had lunch. And then we went back to the hotel and just found out by the pool because we were all tired. And then we also just were getting ready to move with those next day. And then we went to dinner again.
Firstly, this is my favorite day. Um, we were in Ponce. Um. Sorry, I don't really remember the dates. Um, we did a history, like walking tour of Ponce, which was really interesting to see like a different area. It was on the other side of, um, Puerto Rico. Um, then we went to a cooking class where we made fango, which is basically panteens with like garlic. Um, lotion's like a bowl shape and you put like beans, rice, chicken in it. It was really good actually. Um, then we went to our hotel. But, um, and we were only there for about twenty minutes and we went to, um, the ocean and we went to the bioluminescent bay. So the microalgae in the water like lit up and got agitated, we moved in it. Um, a lot of us also digged stung by jellyfish. And then after that we got some time to walk around the area and grab dinner.
Is that what that bottom picture was, was the ocean changing color, the water changing color?
Yeah, so like all like the pictures are like the water.
Oh wow, that's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, this was day five, we went back to San Juan. Um, this day was when like the rain tide started, so we went to the beach, but then we left pretty quick. Because none of us really wanted to be there. And then we went to our new hotel and then we walked over to dinner, which was fun.
It was really good food.
Yeah.
American or Chinese? Makes sense. Of course.
At least it was good Chinese.
Oh yeah.
Um, day six, which was my birthday actually.
What a way to celebrate.
Yeah. It was kind of rainy all day, it was actually pouring. Um, but we went to a nature reserve where we got on these strawberries and like we learned about some wildlife in the area. Um, and we went in a little, um, lighthouse. Uh, that's where some of these views are from. Um, we then headed to Old San Juan and had lunch. We had about two hours just to roam around, shop, eat, do whatever we wanted. Um, then we went up to the tour and there was some pretty nice views from there. Um, then we went to, um, an art walk for, we saw some beautiful artwork on the street and we headed to dinner.
Chinese?
Italian.
Um, this was our last day, we had breakfast, kind of gets over now, like by the pool and stuff, and then we went off to the hotel. That was just another travel, travel day, kind of rainy, but it was nice to go home, but also most of us just wanted to stay.
Um, the conclusion is we both had a, like fairly good time. It was, it was fun that we got some free up to do what we wanted and we didn't have to stick to this like routine. Um, and I think both of us know a lot about the people who went, would recommend it to others, perhaps, when wanting to travel and like see different parts of the world. Yeah, it was really fun and interesting.
It was also nice because we were in hotels with other school groups, so we didn't personally, but a bunch of the other kids were like down by the pool hanging out with them. And that was fun. Also like after our full situation at the hotel with the bedbugs, um, we ended up.
I was wondering why it's 3:00 AM.
We all kinda like, that was kinda like a bonding moment honestly for all of us.
We were all like sitting in the lobby.
Most of us really falling asleep. It was actually more fun than I thought it would have been.
Four grades was it?
All four.
All four grades?
Yeah. It was a big mix. I think five seniors, but the, most of them were sophomores, like a couple juniors and a couple freshmen.
Looked like a beautiful time.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies, for that.
Nice job ladies.
Do you wanna move right into their, the request of the travel club for their next trip?
The travel club?
Travel club.
Sorry.
London and Ireland.
Ireland.
Really? Is that, I thought it was France and.
France.
Yeah. I would not pay with Ireland.
By one vote.
One vote?
Yeah.
Aubrey's hunt.
Parker wanted to, um, shepherd, now he don't. It's like no.
I wanna shepherd. Sorry, I'm just looking at this thing. Yes. So that would be for, um, Friday, April twenty third. Earliest Friday, April twenty third, requested is twenty fourth. And then it looks like the latest would be the twenty fifth, those three dates somewhere in there that you're meeting. And this one is for ten days, right? Yes. So we need a motion to, um, accept the request for travel in the year, is this, this isn't for next year, right? Twenty twenty seven for the travel club. I will make that motion. A second. Any discussion or questions? Um, are we, I can't remember if this is what we talked about. Are we gonna wait until after the vote and then potentially offer this to interested kids too? Cause they'll be here.
We've invited them.
Okay.
To parent meeting and I think perhaps some parents are coming.
I remember there was something, but I couldn't remember if this was it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Alright, any more questions? Alright, any more questions? All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? So moved. Ms. How's not here tonight? Superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think the big one was the Arizona trip that was well discussed, I thought. We have a couple of other items I'll highlight. Strategic planning, as you know, is a full swing. We did meet with our uh. The steering committee and the fourteen captains represented the data to the steering committee. The steering committee and I have now met. And have taken all of the data and information and formed it into a series of goals under each of the four key areas. There are two goals in each of the community relations, finance and facilities, culture and climate. There are six goals under teaching and learning. They're draft goals. Uh, they're not wordsmithed precisely yet. That's actually going to be the word of the senior leadership team. At which point we as a senior leadership team will take those uh, large lofty goals and build strategies to achieve. So there'll be a number of different uh, conversations that we will have and they'll talk more about those tonight when they report out of their committee reports. I met with superintendents uh, with nine school districts interested in exploring uh, a collaborative for special education students. The key topic that we gathered from that meeting was uh, uh, more of a self-contained classroom program. Short-term acute therapeutic program for children ages, well, three, four, up to six and seven PK to two. Cause we're seeing in all of our districts, a heightened level of violence and physical uh, physical abuse from students of that age. And wanting to address that in a way that we can't in an individual school district because the expense is too great, whether or not the. Um, space, we don't have the funding, we don't have the staff, and we don't have all of the above. That was a pretty popular topic with the other superintendents. And so they are definitely interested in starting small with something like that. So I've explored the use of some space at Winchester. We have an entire building that we could. Put into the mix as a potential, obviously talking with Patty and understanding rules. The state of New Hampshire, getting program approval for self-contained classroom programming kind of program has hoops to jump through. Today I met with uh, Monique Antoya, I think is her last name.
Antaya.
Antaya, thank you, from um, the EBC.
Yep.
Which is educational behavior consulting.
Yes.
And they do a lot of BCBA, uh, RBT work, a lot of work with our our students who have real behavior needs. We do contract with them here. We're contracting with them at Winchester and they're pretty well-known in the area. Excuse me. And um, for about an hour, we just kind of did some vision building around what would it look like? How could it be staffed? We didn't talk about numbers, we didn't talk about cost, but just try to build a vision for it right now. One thing was confirmed is an absolute need in our area. There is not something like that in our area. Uh, the the need is is um, there in all districts where she works and then some. And there would be some cost savings for us. Don't know what that is, but in cost sharing. It would save districts from having to build their own individual self-contained classrooms. As opposed to having one site and a program and working through the transportation and all of that. So she's on board. We talked about. Um, looking at the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as a target year to try and do something, starting small. Which gives us uh, time to work again with Patty and with Chad Heiss, who's the director of specialist at Winchester. I want to hear more from them. Then talking, I think, with other directors and going back to the superintendents and asking, are you serious about this? Cause we are. Kind of make sure we get their buy-in and then start planning for that. So we build that out as part of our budget development process for FY twenty-seven. Um, and then we would begin to go through the program approval process as well. So, so you know, good conversation, so far positive. I know we're gonna run into speed bumps, many questions along the way. So we just have to take it stage by stage and just work through it, okay? Uh, bravely and bravely, uh, Y two or year two, we worked with our middle school redesign process. We just met yesterday. Um, I feel and Anna and Karen certainly chime in. Um, we've made some breakthrough with the teaching staff. I think the redesign process is going well. I think. Um, having the teacher here taking some lead roles and shifting how they're building units of study and offering it to students. It's very helpful. I think we have a ways to go, which is why we've applied for a year two grant, which would then provide the funding we need. For the professional development and teaching all of our middle school staff, how to unit plan for six to eight week periods, so six or seven units. That would be thematic. That would be built more on a growth and social emotional development process as opposed to a. Subject-based process because at ages ten to thirteen, that seems to be. Uh, the area where our middle schoolers or 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 children need to learn the skill of learning. And so using content and subjects, which are important, to teach those skills. Uh, critical analysis, you know, literacy, numeracy skills, so that when they get to high school, they're ready for the. The subject-based learning and they already have the skills that are in place. So lots to do there. But I thought we had a pretty good uh, year of that redesign and redevelopment. And we have a presentation to do for the other three schools that are involved in the program, June something. Yeah, June, we're doing it in June.
You are right.
Yeah, uh, and it's gonna be amazing. I wanted to just bring to your attention, this is more of an FYI that we want to put on our uh, radar if we want to go back to the negotiations table. Uh, that our collective bargaining agreement is written for our teachers. The work year is spelled out in days. ED three oh six eighteen of the Hampshire State Academic Standards will shift this most recent revision to hours only. So no longer does the department care how many days we're in school. They only care about the number of hours. So we have to have a minimum of nine hundred ninety hours of instruction for grade seven through twelve. K through six, nine hundred and forty-five. We far exceed that. There is no problem with that. The difficulty comes in is when we look to an hours based and we don't make up a snow day, the teachers are on a days based. And there was some confusion from the teachers association on, well, if the students aren't coming to those days, neither are our teachers. That is absolutely not the case. They're coming. We do have two full days of PD because the contract still states one hundred and eighty-eight days. The caveat is, does delineate one hundred and eighty teaching days? That's the sticky wicket. And so when we go back to the table. That's the rub? That's the catch. We're gonna get more Shakespeare here. So anyway, back to me, Kendra. So we need to obviously address that when we go back to the table. Uh, we are all set to to continue moving forward. I I do like making up uh, snow days only because I think our kids deserve to have as much instruction as we can possibly provide them. When we start getting into the late parts of June, however, when the the date begins with the number two.
Yeah.
I do, I do think it becomes problematic at what are we really doing on those days, particularly at the middle high school where. It's such a ridiculous schedule with the way assessments are done. It's a complex schedule, so. I get why we did it this year. No worries with that, but it it'll be an annual thing that we talk about as we move forward. Um, and I did tell the the association I would bring this to your attention and that there would be a discussion, okay? I haven't discussed it, I'm gonna move on. Hey, last night. You're the board, I'll do whatever you want.
We can go back if you want.
I was just gonna say, did you know last night that uh, Hinsdale passed the tuition agreement with Winchester?
Yes.
Yes, I heard that as well. Yes. And so obviously we know what happens next. Saturday from ten to five, voting will be open in Winchester. Uh, they've been pushing information out. They've been contacting the parents to come vote. Uh, we'll know pretty early Saturday evening. The the clerk has a thousand copies of the ballots, thousand ballots. We're uncertain, we'll see a thousand people, but if if we do. If we do, we'll have them.
That'd be great.
We'll have, so we'll know. Next step after that should have passed and and I'm gonna go positive and say it's gonna pass. Um, we'll get that up on Monday, right up to Angel Adams at the uh, Commissioner's office. Who can put it on the consent agenda for the state board of ed. Their meeting is on June twelfth, not just June, but June twelfth. And I'll, it starts at nine thirty, I'll go. I'm absolutely gonna be there. However, I'll get the time range of when it comes up on the agenda. Because the last thing you want to do is go to a state board meeting at nine thirty in the morning and your consent agenda comes up at two fifteen. So, um, I'll make sure I have that information for us in case you want to attend April.
Yeah.
I think Karen, uh, Dr. Jerome said that she probably won't attend.
Yeah.
And so, but I'll absolutely be there and if you can't, that's perfectly fine. So we get past Saturday and I'll let you know. So that is, I mean, there's a lot going on as you, as you know, and you'll hear from the rest of the team. Uh, but a lot of good things are happening. A lot of good things are happening, so we're just gonna keep moving forward. So that's my report for today.
Did you have a question? Um, so I was just, the shift to hours was kind of caught me. So, do we know the purpose? Is it to affect adequacy? Are we gonna see any, anything there? Because it is less.
It's less restrictive. And so um, the way that this legislation, the way that the. Department of Ed and the commissioner have been moving is to become much more, or excuse me, much less restrictive. In what schools do in terms of operations. And so once they instituted learn everywhere, where they removed the classroom walls. And actually removed educators from it. That opened up the floodgates to do the voucher system, right? So EFAs has grown and now. It's universal where there's no income limit on universal uh, vouchers for for the state. So the move to hours, hours had been in there for quite some time at when the commissioner began.
Right.
And he's finally succeeded now in getting a majority in the legislature to do just hours. So schools can operate on fewer days, which is less, which costs less.
Right.
And so, yeah, everything always goes back to money. And so they'll only credit up to six hours maximum in a school day. Five hours and forty-five minutes in an elementary school. So even if we went ahead and said, well, then we're gonna have eight-hour days, we're still only getting your credit for six hours. So we can't go less than that.
Right.
But we're way over. So we have fifteen additional days worth of instruction built into our calendar as it stands right now.
Okay.
We haven't received the spring policy book either.
Okay.
Uh, Will's pulling Tara trying to get that done inside to us. So that's why we don't have any policy to bring forward yet because whatever we change for in our policy manual right now. Most likely is gonna be in that book as, oh, you gotta change it to this now, so we're waiting.
It was hard finding the policies, like what has been approved or hasn't. It was pulling my hair out trying to.
We pay membership for someone to do that for us, so we'll use that to our advantage. I agree with you.
It was, yeah, cause and I have a feeling like some things were denied. They wanted to chop academics. So instead they just did hours and that was an easy way to kind of accomplish this.
Yeah, so schools can go one hundred and seventy-three days. So you can have kids in school far less than other kids in other districts, as long as you meet, you're on nine hundred ninety hours.
And we wonder why the US is falling behind?
And don't get me going, sorry.
Yeah, there's a lot of that. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Ryan? Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Jean Forson, business administrator.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have my report. Um, don't really have too many updates, although I did um, say in the report. That I would kind of give you um, a month, ten-month ending, April thirtieth report. I really have no changes from what I presented last month. Things are still going as I expected. Couple lines, I was like, oh, I don't think we're gonna spend as much. And then there were a couple more that I'm like, well, let that happen. So um, we're, we're still pretty steady. Um, I expect to see over two hundred thousand at this point. Um, again, um, if I were a betting person, I'd say it might be higher, but I'm not sure. So, cause there may be some things that the, cause you know, last year, the, we had to get the lift. You know, nearly sixty thousand at the end of the year that just came, you know, so we just never know. But um, so far things are are going fairly well. Um, revenues are on target for what I thought. I still have to chase a couple down, but. I expect to get those in as well, so. And that, um, food service. That has.
It's awful lot of work and a big task for.
It's not a lot of gain. Um, I will be making calls later this week. Yeah, I will continue to do some of this as we move forward. However, your policy, I may either request to have changed. Or follow your board policy in which the principals do this. And I just don't think, especially being new. But I have shared, I have shared with both of them the documents so that they know the students and and can kind of see the picture on it. Um, I have only shared it with them and with Erica, cause that's information, don't worry about there. Um, but we have had about twenty-eight hundred of the initial debt that was due on six thirty twenty-four paid off. I had another one reach out to me today to tell me she will be making payments next week. Um, I, like I said, I am gonna call the follow-up. Um, I hope people think and know that I am serious, like this. I'm sorry, you just can't leave your neighbors with, we're at um, forty-eight thousand seven hundred, forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Oh, I was thinking the twenty-five hundred was good.
Here's the sad part about it. When, on April twenty-first, when I ran the report, we were at forty-nine thousand five hundred. And I've had that money paid off and we've only gone down nine hundred dollars. So it is heartbreaking to me. Um, but and I was hoping people going off, this, you know, what is, you know, making us pay our bills. I was hoping that would kind of get around and you'll see. Money being paid off, but we're not. And then it's disappointing, however, I was very pleased to see, I think some people were like, oh my God, look at my debt. And applied for um, through the state for, we have seven additional. That's huge because we know they are out there. And so if this is what it takes to get them to apply, then by all means, then that's a win for us. So, but it is, it it, it's very hard for me to do this, you know, I don't like to do this, but. How long do you just carry this stuff? Um, so I want to clean this up.
Yeah, we made so many bits to get rid of.
And there's so many layers to this too. So just so that you know, um, I went through and we have a lot of inactive, uh, they're still active accounts. That, you know, might have twenty-five cents in it or someone owes two sixty-five or whatever. So what we will be reaching out. Actually reached out to one today and um, a former employee and they have fifteen dollars on their account that is, oh, you know, we owe them. And they're like, no, use it, use it to offset. So I'm gonna take some of those little negatives and and positives and offsets. We can just. We have forty-one pages with twenty-seven lines to a page of, you know, reports of not just debt, but everybody. And I already killed off a ton. Like we have staff that I know have been gone for a long time. They didn't owe anything, they're just there as actors. So I have been cleaning up all the reports. So one of the things that I've done is for students that have transferred out is the majority of it. Because Erica does a really good job of catching the kids who are graduating. Um, so we have very few old balances. It might be an occasional two dollars because they probably ate on the last day, you know, whatever it happened to be. Um, but anyway, so those get caught, but we have a lot of students that transfer out and that's two thousand dollars of your debt. They will get the same, you know, you're either going to collections. It may be hard to find, but as I found out in in doing this previously. A lot of people don't change their emails. They change their phone, change their address, they don't change their emails. So, and I'll know if it bounces back, but it doesn't get to them. So I will be sending those out and giving them the thirty days and then you're, you're going to collections. I'm not even fooling around. Done. So you don't leave the district with, you know, two thousand dollars of debt. That's not fair.
I haven't changed my email in fifteen years.
I'll tell you, it is the one way to find people.
Same one I had in my twenties.
I know, I got locked out of the one I had in high school.
But yeah, so I wanna. I want to clean this up as much as I can before we, you know, and I say, oh geez, here you go. But it is easier for them because they do know the students. I'm just looking at numbers and and it's very hard. And and so when they know the student, there's maybe more of a story behind it. Um, I have had quite a few reach out to me and and I hear the story and I've sent them all the paperwork I possibly can to get them to apply. So hopefully that will continue, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sure, can I just add one item that was not in my report that I was told last night? I was verbally informed that um, our hopes on requests for the district were approved. And that the uh, the computer system app, the. And that the, uh, the computer system app, the charitable foundation are down right now. They won't be back up. They don't think until the end of the month. So that's from a letter will be generated. But I did speak with a member of the, um, trustees and, uh, we asked for twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And my understanding is that that's fully approved. So lots of good stuff. So we're not losing all kinds, we're not losing money there, but we're taking.
Well, I mean, you look at it in the other way, you know, every time you get, um, someone who is eligible for free, that's adequacy. Extra adequacy money and it's, it's a big number now with the way the new formula is. Yeah, it's, there's, there's a good and a bad. It's just hard. It's very hard. It's a lot of work for.
Are we able to identify people who might be eligible without them filling out the paperwork? Okay, without any, yeah.
No, it's, it's so hard. And that's where, this is really like the principals, you guys kind of have a sense.
You had sent out where we can do it if we have certain information on their behalf.
Because they're dealing with D C Y F and, and people like that. Like, I, I did have a social worker reach out to me. Um, and, you know, worked through them and, yeah, we got them on, on the free finally.
Yeah.
Uh, but there's, there's cases where that's just not happening.
Yeah, and, and even, you know, when we, when we tried, it, it's. In order to get through that process of our best guess, we have to ethically say like, know why we're guessing that.
Yes, yes.
And we may not know where they work or how many hours they work. And we can look up the average pay of that place, but is that, it just gets suddenly mucky. And, um, cuz we did, we've tried a few things.
Yeah, and it's very hard. Like, um, you know, I had one contact me today and so in writing back, I didn't want to say, oh, by the way. Here's the application, here's the state website, cuz I don't wanna presume. So I left it as, if there is anything I can do to help you. Re, with, with regards to this or anything regarding food service, please let me know cuz I can't presume to know circumstances.
The bigger thing is just have everybody fill it out because all the title world.
But do you notify them that it's available, whether?
Um, at the very start of the year, um, we sent the application out. It, it goes home. I really wanna see that quarterly or maybe try, you guys are trimester separate, Anna? I'm, I'm thinking tri-quarterly, we'll send it out because I think doing through the year, cuz we've had a lot come on recently too. Because what happens is when a lot of them are, are categorically free, it will usually go through till October first. Sometimes October sixth depends on, you know, where the update comes in. And that they don't know, that like if, if they're not in touch with the state or close to having done this, they don't know. And all of a sudden, you can see where they were free cuz I could go back, look at the history and they're free for, you know, the last twelve months. And then all of a sudden. Here it comes real fast. And what I would like to do is, because I know that October date is, is one of those dates that it really starts. That's when I really, and that's when the applications are out there. But it's when I really wanna hit people so that they know, like, look at your account. You are going massively negative. You're not free anymore. And I think that's what kind of jogged a few of these people now. It's like, I have this huge debt and I'm free and like. Cuz I, I mean, I'm carrying on conversations with them going, you're not. It expired in October, you know, so it, it's hard. Yeah, so.
Maybe do, you can just educate people better.
And I mean, I, I, I have one that, they're like, well, all I can do is this. I'm like, I will take it. I will not proceed against you. I will take it. So I said.
I wonder if we should start contacting people in October if they were free and then all of a sudden they're not. So they know like, hey, you're about to start.
I'm not sure. I'd have to find out if we can. I don't, I don't know.
We don't have access to that information.
We, well, we, yeah, we won't know who is going to. Because what happens is we have, we get a direct cert report. So I go on the DOE website, actually started in July, um, and starting like, um, if you, if you take a look at our list, it'll say seven to twenty-five. Or twenty-four eligibility. That's gonna take them through October of that next year. And so this report comes out every month. Every month I download it after the DOE has updated it and it, and you'll look and you'll see, okay, September sixth. You know, three more families came on it. What I do is each month I send that to Erica so that she can put that information into our Titan, the, the food system. But the problem that we have is, once one student goes free in a household, they're all free. Do you think the state puts them all on there? Oh, no, 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 no. Didn't this last month either. I got one in a family that I knew because of this one, not the other one, but we'd already taken care of that. But it just gets very difficult, you know, and I understand different last names and some, but, and that's where, you know, knowing the students really, really does help. But there's even times where like I'll run a compare and kids that weren't free on seven-two, all of a sudden they come free on seven-two. But you can't get that money back that you already paid because, don't even get me going. It's the state. It's just.
I, I will say on this, on the state basis for homeless, there's a new system that I need to, so the documentation is gonna be much better. For them to keep an updated list of homeless, which is automatically. So that, so, so that's, that's just rolling out right now.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I updated all because they had, it was completely wrong. What they had, you know, they were missing like four kids and they had kids that. Weren't there since like twenty-twenty-two. So it's like, no, so it's, so I, they, they're, the, the homeless, the homeless one, uh, is. Going to, I think that's going to be much better. Yeah. I wouldn't say easier, but much, but more accurate.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, cuz one of your hard things is, you know, maybe you start with a student, they move to a different district. While at the same time, other kids are moving into this district are categorically free. But don't tell us. Well, we're charging and then we go, why is this happening? Cuz we don't have anything. My report never will update during the year cuz they just don't keep up. And so, and you know, I have to say, do you have your stat number? Do you have this or whatever? And I mean, I'm just like, I remember and I'm like, yep, that's good. Actually Nutrition Services, if the state goes, if they're telling you, you believe it. So, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of different nuances to it, but, um, you know, try to keep up with that as much as possible. It's good. Because Erica does know so many of the families and, and knows, well, this one is when we know this one is. So that, that does help having that, that knowledge where. I don't have that knowledge unless I'm like, you know, going through, like when I did the letters, I'm like, wait, I already have that address. I'm putting them together.
Any other questions for Jane? All right, thank you, Jane. Director of Academics.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have my report. You also have in front of you, well, you did have in front of you, um, invitations to the mentor dinner.
Yes.
Um, and you each are lucky winners of a student agency T-shirt that we wore, that our students wore to student agency. I will just start by saying, um, Jeanie's largest night trip was nowhere near as exciting as a trip to Sunnyside. So no comparison. The weather was comparable, but the conference was not. Um, that was really, really disappointing to me, but, um. You know, we did, we were able to pull some, some things out of the, the conference that, you know. It was nice to sit amongst like-minded people in a few of the sessions, former, um, Secretaries of Education, which I was honored to be. Present in, in their, in their group. So that was nice. And for them to really call us to action about things that are happening in education right now. So that was, that was the nice part. Our student agency's kids did a phenomenal job. I am so excited about how everything's just tying in. Um, I love that Sunnyside Group calls it learner agency. Our students call it, um, student agency. As I wrote in the report, it was the first time for a few of our kids to be in an overnight trip. So that, I know, if nothing else came from it, which much did. Um, I feel like how lucky we were to be able to take these kids and have them experience something. Um, what I'm hearing tonight is a whole lot of traveling in Hinsdale happening, which is really nice. I mean, even, even. Uh, field trips that are happening in Molly's grade levels. Um, our kids are just getting out there and isn't that what we really are looking for, for experiences outside of? And so, so that's really nice to hear. Um, our, our student agency kids did a really nice job, um, representing Hinsdale. Um, I, I was incredibly, I mean, first of all, we stood out cuz we all had matching shirts with the agency thing on the back, which was like, took them, everybody was like, wow.
But our kids were awesome.
That's right. Um, so our kids, yeah, so they talked a lot about their plan, their thoughts on. Um, we talked, we talked about the Sunnyside trip and how that would connect together. They are, I, I'm really impressed with the empathy of our kids and how they wanna be very cautious of how they proceed with their idea. Of, they called it engagement. Um, it took, takes a lot of courage, which is why they put that word in the definition to really get up and speak out. So, um, they'll be doing work through the summer. They've committed to two years. So we're bringing N H L I here in the summer. These kids will be doing more work. With N H L I outside trainers to help, hopefully the Sunnyside Group can join. I mean, the kids can, we can make this as big as we need to, to talk about, um, empathy interviews. How do we, the best way to get voice from everybody in our school, in our, in our school community. Um, and one way is empathy interviews, but that's a big task. So how are we gonna do that? And, yeah, it's a busy time of the year right now. Exhibition Day is, and Mentor Dinner is. Exhibition Day is two days, two weeks. And, yeah, so I, I, I'm thrilled that it's back and up the way we used to do it. We'll see. Let's see how it goes this year. We'll have, of the kids that did it yellow, we'll have fourteen presentations happening on that day at the same time. Um, so, uh, there were a few kids, there were a good handful of kids that only get half a year and already did some sort of presentation. So. They, they won't need to or are continuing next year in their ELO. So they'll do a full presentation next year. Um, but we will have fourteen happening that day. Um, feel free to join us if you'd like. Just let me know so I can send you a golden ticket cuz you can't get in without one. So, um, and, yeah, we're working on professional development days. There are, you know what? There are gonna be chocolate bars. We weren't going to, but Dr. Ryan was like, am I getting a chocolate bar with that? And so wait till you see the chocolate bars. We're preparing for this, but you have to hand in your ticket to the chocolate bar. Um, so, uh.
How many kids do you have in, doing an ELO right now?
So, all year long, there are about twenty-four kids that did them, but not all of them are doing exhibition. So, um. Some.
Just eleventh and twelfth?
No, we had some ninth graders that were doing some, and ten, some smaller, um, actually, Dr. Ryan, I talked about this a little bit today about. It's hard to get a ninth, it's not as hard as we think it is. It's hard for kids to think in ninth grade that they can do it. They can. You know, we have a student that came to me yesterday that said, did you know that I'm in the firefighter cadet program over in Westminster, Vermont? And I'm like, no. And yes, I need to know about that because why are you not getting credit for that? So a whole new discussion. He's like, I can get credit for that? I think he kind of knew, but he wasn't sure. That's why he came to me. So that sort of discussion is like trickling out, like, how can our younger kids feel comfortable to say? I'm doing this thing outside of school and this thing can count as credit. So, um, I mean, I think that's one of our strengths. Is we know how to make it, turn it into credit. We just have to get the kids again to use their voice to say, I'm taking to get to class and I'd like to get credit.
You told me a number of kids for next year.
Thirty right now.
Uh, we're over thirty. I just looked at the list again.
We're over thirty since this morning.
Yeah. Well, because I had, yeah, so we have about thirty-two kids signed up for next year. And that's a lot. Thirty-two kids is, will be the biggest number we've had, um, as well as a possibility of ten to twelve kids at the Career Center. And what I know historically, every single year, and it's been, we've not strayed from this, is we have our list of kids that sign up and at the beginning of the school year. We literally have minimum seven more because kids forget, oh, I wanna take an ELO or they hear their friends talk about it and they're like, why couldn't I sign up for that? So on the first drop ad time, we always add seven more. So, uh, I think we're gonna be around forty kids next year. That's before the Winchester.
It's a third of our high school.
Yeah.
So to be thinking about the growth of the program as we grow Winchester kids is something we really need to have on our radar. So, Dr. Ryan, I've talked a little bit about that today. So.
I mean, it really gives these kids an opportunity to do something. I mean, I just, in my home too, experience like. Parker had never, ever had any idea to do anything with cards. I mean, he wanted to be. A P E teacher or chiropractor since he was.
Yes, he did.
Since he was in sixth grade, I mean, his whole childhood. And he did his ELO, he signed up for Keene State, he signed up in their P E program, he went. And he made it half his, half his year. And he is working for his ELO full-time. Like that, and loving it, absolutely loving it, a passion. He had no idea. He, I literally got him into that ELO just to get him out of the classroom because his senior year, he was like, I am over this. And it was literally just to just be like, please, like, I'm so sick of fighting you to get up in the morning. Like, that was what it was for me is like, and I know this guy, like, just go, like, get out, like, you can listen to music, like, something you love and go. And it just became this passion for him that he had no idea. And he's there full-time. He's loving it. He's going to like. And it's taken him down to New Jersey, New York. He's gone, he's traveled to Pennsylvania. He has gone to different dealerships. He's, he hates public speaking. He's had to go and speak to different dealerships and bring in different. Companies and get contracts. And it's like this whole different world. He had no idea and he never would have had it. Had this opportunity, not been here.
And he called me about three weeks ago.
Oh, he did?
To say, well, no, he, he sent me a message. Can you call me? And I'm thinking, oh, God, Parker's what? Yes, I can. And he's like, Ms. Thompson? I said, yes. He said, um, I'd like to know if I could take on an ELO student. Okay. Like, so somehow he connected with a student who I wouldn't have ever thought I would have connected.
He did not tell me that.
And so the student is gonna do an ELO with him next year.
Nice.
So that's kind of amazing.
I had no idea he was gonna tell me that, but, yeah, I think it's just such a good program. I don't think like we, I know we're getting more out and we're talking about it more, but. I don't think we get it out quite as much as we should because there still are.
Yeah.
Students here who don't know. And like, when I talk about it, they're like, oh, could you, they're like, what, what is that?
Well, Exhibition Day.
Yellow.
Exhibition Day, well, oh, people used to think I was saying yellow, but I kept saying, this is yellow program. Anyway, um, and people my age start singing cuz they. But, uh, I think Exhibition Day being back and being big will help expose that a little bit again. It, we stopped it during COVID. And so the big exhibition days that had, you know, a hundred people here stopped. Um, so we're bringing, that will be, this is the first time we're doing it again since then. So that'll be, um, a bigger, a, a way to get that out there. You know, I, I think it's, you're right. I think it makes such a difference. We also have a student who's doing an ex, uh, her exhibition on why her ELO didn't work. We've never had somebody do that. It totally bombed, totally bombed. Right.
And he was like.
But this student is brave and like wants to do on what she expected and what, what didn't happen and how it changed her. It didn't change her path to her career. It just. Yeah, so she asked if she could do that and I said, absolutely. But that's what, that was your, that was your experience, your story. So.
It's great. It's amazing, actually.
So join us that day if you'd like.
Any other questions for? So, um, are teachers that are on our SOEs, they're on track?
Yes, we are. Um, so, you know, it's a three-year process. So some are in year one, some are in year two, some are in year three. It's the year three people that we always pay attention to at this time of year because they have to get up so they can get their certification. So. Um, you know, my role and I was just to support them through the process. It's really up to them to do what they need to do with their mentor to get that done. And we're just here to guide them. Um, and yeah, we're working with the two, we have one that got, that finished. And got his beginning license. So that's exciting. Um, and we're working on why not the last, the other previous teacher that needs to get her. Hers. We only had two this year that were in the year three. So we have others on SOEs, but only two in year three.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Karen. We are up to principals reports. Yeah.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have my report. Um, we are deep in curriculum review work. That's been continuing. Dean Serres has been coordinating, um, the field coordinator in July. Um, they're entering year two, or they're in year two with social studies and they're just getting started with science. So that's a lot of work going on. Um, and in December, the State School Board adopted, um, new three oh six rules for state minimum standards. So we're still kind of trying to wrap our mind around those. Um, I'm gonna go to a, a keynote workshop on them. At the, um, New Hampshire Principal Summer Leadership County in June to hopefully get a better understanding. And, um, Jeanie and I will keep working on how we're gonna bring that work forward to the teachers. I sent letters to. I sent letters to all parents about end of year stuff. Did you get two letters from me?
I haven't yet. I checked today cuz I was reading that and I was like, ooh.
Um, so there's separate letters, one for seniors and then one for the rest of the kids. It's just like end of the year date, exam schedules, et cetera. So that's all, um, should be out there. Um, and then second, I have started scheduling interviews. I have a couple of school counselor interviews and a math interview scheduled, so that is exciting. And other positions, not so much movement on yet, but I am hopefully optimistic. Um, we also just posted for a temporary sub nurse because Jan, I don't know if you guys heard, she fell. Uh, over the weekend and broke her leg in a couple places. So she has had one of two surgeries. She'll be out for, oh, I think the rest of the year. She says not, but I.
That sounds like the rest.
So we're hopeful. Um, we have um, Tika. As like our backup for emergencies.
Yeah, she's not going any more field trips.
But we're still trying to find someone um, as a. Temporarily, um, we have some, we have, you know, um. Some kids with ongoing medical needs that parents are understandably worried about us not having someone in the building. And Molly and I sat down and met about fifth grade transition. I'm really excited. We are um. Doing it differently this year, so they're gonna be here for a couple of hours, the fifth graders, uh, and it will be really student-led, student-led tours, student-led panel. Um, and time in their future classrooms with their future teachers. So um, my understanding is.
That from Tucson?
No, I took that from Twin Valley. It's gonna be great. Uh, and my understanding is that in history, they did a tour of the building and it was empty on like a final, yeah, final exam day. And I think it's important for them to be here when the kids are here and see what it feels like, are gonna eat lunch with um, the sixth grader in the cafeteria. It's nice.
I feel like we did that though when we were coming over here.
I said the nineteen hundreds.
Are we gonna sing together? All right, well, I thought that's a great idea.
All right. Any questions for Anna?
No, move on.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Dr. Brenner.
Um, so.
Have a question for her.
Yeah, me too.
Was it, cuz it, mine was the last one.
Yeah, my papers were out of order.
Uh, we had um, uh, great things before break and then I, the drama club, um, I know. Kendra will talk about it in past, but the vast majority of the performers were from the elementary school. So that was. Um, and so um, it just, it helps them bring so much together, like to memorize that, to think about that, the pacing, all that. There's so many parts of the brain being built um, in, in drama and music. And so I just wanted to highlight. Uh, that piece and standing room only because Terry, I think, was ready to close the doors because he said we were at capacity.
Seemed overcapacity. I was like, man, there better not be an emergency.
It was awesome. Um, but, but Terry really was, he's like, I'm pretty sure we're right, right there. Um, and so that was. A little stressful, but um, it was great. So um, it was, it was so fun. So this was pre-K through fifth. Um, and so um, the older groups had, had songs and then the, all the little people had this group song.
We were talking about the things though. I see what you mean. Yes, go ahead.
She attended.
I'm Mark right now.
I didn't wanna call that out, though. So I, it was, it was a hoot. Um, and I, and we all, we all left. We had a, a different way to leave because there's some. Oddness uh, in the, in the traffic jams in the winter. So we had a different way. And I think, given that many people, it actually worked. Um, so we exited both from the gym and the camp. That was helpful. So lesson learned.
Worked much better than, than exiting.
We did spend two faculty meetings really going through a different option. So um, we were, we had all sorts of ideas. Um, all right, um, SAS and end of year benchmarking, all going forward, full steam. Um, the um. The district leadership teams have all been working in their own parts and ways and with each other um, on. A data-informed classless procedure this year that once the class list is made, it's, it's there. Um, and so that's been. Really great to vet out all sorts of other topics within, within that project. Um. Teacher assignments. I'm guessing that's where the questions. Um, so as I mentioned at our last board meeting, we've had a big preschool interest this year. Um, and a smaller kindergarten interest even at this time of year. We know that there's always more that come for, for kindergarten. Um, but even this time of year, a little bit smaller. So um. With that, with the goal of not saying no to preschool so that we can get these kids in, right, based enrollment, early intervention, all these things. Um, we have, I, without, without increasing staff. Um, taken one of our current kindergarten teachers and she'll have a split day. So half of her day she will teach pre, a preschool program. The other half, she will work with the kindergarten teachers. That exact model's being worked out. I actually left the meeting right before half about the preschool side of it. Um, and so. In this way, we're not going to say no to any of those preschool families. And it would have been almost half of them, would have been said no to. Um, so that's where the slash business goes. We're not having a half-day kindergarten. Wanted to be clear about that. Full, two full-day kindergarten classes. But some of the models we're looking at are um, co-teaching or to work on interventions that way. Um, a piece of that should be kindergarten connected, that other half. Um, and then uh, Ms. King uh, requested to move into that uh, second grade slot. Um, that was uh, opening. Um, uh, Ms. Wisman uh, to shift back to third grade. She'd previously been there. Um, so actually hiring and all of that for fourth grade. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what do you mean? Ms. Poochel will be working with the other two kindergarten teachers. So like she'll be teaching a hat, she'll be teaching. A preschool class in the morning, but not in the afternoon?
Or vice versa. That's the part we're still honing out. We're close, but I don't wanna answer that.
And then what would her helping look like? What do you mean? Like she'll be going into one of their classrooms as like a helper?
No, not, not in a helper way and then in a way like that. So. Ms. Snide, Ms. Carrier. So if you're a kindergarten parent, right, or a thinking parent. My teacher would be Ms. Snide or Ms. Carrier.
Yep.
Okay. And then within their schedule. Ms. Poochel would either, we, we, we're still vetting out some pieces of this. Um, would either co-teach in that class so we can have small groups real quick with two certified teachers. Um, a particular subject, or she will keep her room and we may rotate out to that third classroom. Because the kindergarten classes will be slightly big. They're just not big enough to have a third.
So what happens if we get five, six more? Like historically, a lot of families register over the summer.
Yep.
So if we have a huge influx of kindergarten students, then what?
So that, that question was asked by the teaching faculty, um, all of them. Um, and so right now we're at like twenty-two enrolled kindergarten. Um, and when we hit thirty-five or more, then we need to start having that conversation of. Do we need a third? But we're, we actually have a huge gap between when we even start thinking about it.
And those are big kindergarten classrooms. That's a big number. And then we, like, looking at. The teaching, so for fifth grade, we're gonna have three teachers, but then the rest. Only basically having two just seems. Like we're gonna have big. Because big class sizes.
We're not, though. So that, that, that incoming fifth grade right now is, remember in this fifth grade, we're like, this is the biggest. This is a big fifth grade. We're gonna have a third fifth grade teacher. Now. The incoming fourth, the, sorry, the fourth currently is just as big with some higher known needs. Um, and so we're over ten kids different at that fifth grade than any other class.
Cuz that would only put, what, seventeen kindergartners in a. In a class.
Yeah, before we start thinking about needing to open a third, yeah.
Yeah, seventeen is a lot with.
But we're, we're not anywhere near that right now, though.
I, we just have a long time to go before. School starts and I think a lot of parents don't even think about it until it's coming. So I am definitely, and I just feel like, I don't know, that, it just sounds to me, it sounds chaotic. And I hope they're going to have additional para support then because if we do end up at those higher numbers. Like kids come in not able to do anything for themselves, like even toileting sometimes. So you. I'm just definitely, it's concerning.
I guess I'm not, now, I guess I'm not really worried like I was when you say seventeen students per class, cuz I don't feel like that's. Atrocious at, at all, actually. Um. I guess like when you say like co-teaching. Um, I feel like we can like have. Teachers step on each other's toes there and that could be awkward. So I, that's where my main concern would be is if they're okay, if they're on board with.
And again, I just, I just wanna be clear, the teachers are driving the design of both the preschool model and the kindergarten model. And we're not quite there yet to present what the plan is. One of the pieces that being discussed is co-teaching, that doesn't mean that's gonna be where we land. But if we do, then we'll be looking at a specific co-teaching model, which there are set versions of.
Okay.
And making sure they get the PE that they need for that.
It helps, um, Dr. Brenner reviewed this with me as well. We went through this just uh, it was last week and then she continued to work with it. With her, with her staff.
Cuz how many preschoolers are signed up right now? Or why is it be signed up?
So I had those numbers in my April report. Let me just pull that up. Um, and I know how many have changed since then. I think I know how many. Um, so I, yeah, in April, pre-K three was at sixteen, it's now eighteen, I believe. And pre-K four was at twenty and is now nineteen, so that we had one shift down. Um, and kindergarten in April was at seventeen. And I think now it's. Twenty-one or twenty-two, something.
It sounds like, it sounds like if we got to like just seventeen in a classroom for the kindergarten, it's only gonna be half the day for that.
For the most. Because we're going to, to have this other.
Right, cuz the other teacher. Morning or whatever.
I don't see support, but co-collaborating teacher um, with Ms. Poochel, so. Um, so yeah, there's some things to work out, but we have. The shared driver even in this committee around, um, how am I saying? But in, in this committee of. Recognizing the want to make sure we get these learners in early for enrollment for um, the reasons like. Be able to be toileted by the time they get to kindergarten, if they've been through our preschool or those kind of things. So, and, and we started to see the glimmer from the strategic planning about. Preschool being one of the topics under, under learning, teaching and learning. So I do see this as a. Interim year. Um, in that the numbers drive this, um, but we know something has to. We, we want to invest somewhere earlier. It all comes to prevention, you know?
I guess I just don't wanna lose the quality of our kindergarten because I feel like kindergarten's more important than preschool. Um, so I, as a parent, I'm not thinking of anything else than as a parent. As. I wouldn't want one of my children to be pulled out of their, moved halfway through the day or. Um. Shifted out or anything else. I'd want my kindergartner to remain in their classroom for the entire day. Um, especially. I don't know. It, it caught me off guard. So then I was like, I don't know, strictly just as a parent, I don't understand it. So. I'm not in the building. I'm not there. I don't. No, I, I can, I can, just me as a parent, I would think that we would have some backlash at this. Um, it doesn't sit well with me not understanding it all, I guess. And, and I understand that you have to work through it and figure it out. Um, and it could come maybe from change as well. Um. It, it just didn't sit well with me. Came off a little.
And I just wanna make sure the teachers who are doing it are. Part of the process and.
All of it. Um, yeah, they're, they're meeting, I'm joining some meetings. They're meeting on their own. They're. Um, a couple of, the preschool version was meeting today while I was in the field C group and then I circle background where we were. What did we learn? What were the takeaways of what we wanted? Um, so it, it's coming closer and closer, but they're all, they're very much. Going through all of these things, including like, well, what are the parents gonna think? What is, you know, all that. Um, and so, like I said. The kindergarten teacher, room room, will either be Ms. Snide or Ms. Carrier. But we will have a collaborating kindergarten teacher for half the day.
I'll be interested to see what it looks like when it's all flushed out.
And when, and this, yeah. We start this next kind of school year.
Yeah, we, we've been working through things for about three weeks now. And so we're getting very close, but I don't have anything public facing.
Any other questions?
Oh, my hiring, sorry. Uh, PE, several candidates have been interviewed, I believe. One we're starting to move forward on, I believe. Um, fourth grade committee has formed. Candidates are getting scheduled and special in to be determined.
Of course, all the upcoming stuff. Thank you very much, Dr. Brenner. I team.
I'm sure you have my report.
So you were, you've put extra laptops in the middle school classrooms for the teachers to use? That's as needed kind of thing?
Yep, so what we did is, um, we, we bought a batch of laptops for that's our three funds. Um, we finally got those imaged and ready to deploy. We replaced the fifth grade laptops. In doing so, we freed up. Forty-something laptops from fifth grade. What to do with those? Well, I've had, we've had a lot of complaints from the middle school this year. About students not bringing their laptops ready to use or at all. So to help alleviate some of that stress for those teachers, we deployed three spares right now. To try to see if that's gonna be helpful. Do we need to do five? Do we need to do six? Um, we got three out to each of the classrooms in the middle school and are holding back the, the other ones, which are sort of crucial right now during testing. So students are, again, not showing up to class prepared for testing. We quickly bring fully charged, ready-to-go laptops down to those rooms.
And we're in the midst of testing, right? So that's good.
Wow.
It's testing.
All right, and then the, so this projectors, help me understand, there's smart boards and then there's projectors, what's this?
Yeah, so
Are we moving towards projectors versus smart boards?
So the smart boards already have projectors mounted to them.
Okay.
Piece up there, okay.
What, what we did also with that sort of funds, because there's a shortcoming, is some of the, um, smart board setups are very poor condition, just because they're old, they're aging. We, we have fifteen interactive projectors. So they no longer need, need a board on there. They have a laser sensor that mounts the wall above and detects multi-touch. Magic essentially. So i- in some classrooms, um, the middle school has voiced their concern of it. Um, right now, because especially the science classrooms in middle school, they have sinks on one wall, they have cabinets on another, and they got windows on the other wall. So there's one wall for instruction and they have their whiteboard, while we have a smart board like this hanging over half the whiteboard. It limits what they can do. The new setups will potentially allow for them to be mounted there with the board removed. So when they're not using the projector, or even when they are using the projector, the full whiteboard will be used.
Okay.
It's just a different, there is that option or, um, interactive displays like we did in the new addition at the elementary school, which are great sometimes. And in rooms with limited wall space, the projector is a better solution. So we have fifteen of those that we're gonna deploy. Most of them are going to the elementary school. But those are where some of our old, the smart board setups are, but three of them right now are going to the middle school.
Cool, thanks for that, cause I just like, what's the difference?
Yeah. The real problem is, these, these smart board setups were retrofitted with Epson projectors back in like twenty sixteen seventeen. Epson no longer makes a projector with the same screw pattern. Um, so these adapter plates, while great, don't offer us any wiggle room for modern projectors. So, ready to come up with another solution.
Well, thank you. Any questions for Justin? All right, moving on, we have Director of Student Services, Patty.
Madam Chair, you have my report and other board members, if you have any questions.
I'm loving the spotlight. Yeah, I'm loving, and congratulations. Well, that was, was Sarah, if I'm remembering right, Sarah got her
Yes.
Certificate, right?
Yep, she, yeah.
Yeah, degree, thank you. Congratulations to her. Any questions for Patty?
Um, I was just wondering, you stated there were two, I think you said two areas we needed.
Yes.
It stated we need intervention, uh. Do you remember off the top of your
There, there, there's specifically, there's specific indicators that are, that they're working on. Uh, one area is indicator seven, which is testing, um, showing improvement in reading and math in grades four, eight, and eleven. Um, and then also, uh, participation in the statewide testing. And then the la- then the last section is the D L M, the seeing if there is, um, cause it's New Hampshire SAS and then it's D L M in grades four, um, four, six, uh, four, no, four, eight, and eleven. Um, and then the other indicator, uh, is indicator, that was indicator three, indicator seven, which is preschool. Um, so, uh, there is a lot, you know, because they have to do, uh, the, the D R D P, which yeah, they have to do, um, they have to do it in the, in the basically in the fall or when a kid comes in, and then at the end of the year, they have to do that. Um, they've changed, they've, we used to use the apes system, um, but now, with now the state has, had made everybody to use the D R D P. Um, and it's extremely, the, the D R D P is extremely time consuming to complete. Um, but the, they were showing minimal progress, um, on those. So we've looked at um, some of the root cause analysis that we've done is that, you know, we've looked at, okay, how can we improve the, the preschool curriculum? You know, does the D R D P, um, kinda, is it parallel with the early childhood, uh, curriculum that they're using? In some areas, yes, in some areas, no. So it's like, okay, let's, let's look at that, that, that area. I think I've talked about one of the big indicators that we found out was that none of the preschoolers they, they all got, you know, zeros basically for imaginary play.
Oh, yeah.
They had, yeah, they had, so we, so the preschool is really, has been really focusing in on that imaginary play. The four, the four-year-olds have been doing a really good job picking that up. Three-year-olds, not so much, but, you know, there's, there's a start, so I can see that improvement. The part of the, part of the issue is that the LEA determinations is two years behind.
Right.
So what we did, the root cause this year, we won't see that until next year. So, so it's that trickle down.
Right.
So, yeah.
And that was my other question, like preschoolers are doing testing? So you answered that.
Any other questions for Patty? And facilities, Nick. Are there any questions about me?
I looked at his and was like, I'm gonna let Ryan handle that. All right, cause they would probably have a conversation about trash pickup, but neither one is here, so.
It looks like
They could be out in the field talking about it now.
It's been a lot about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything that's bringing it's all.
All right, so we're into board business. Uh, Winchester tuition agreement, you've talked about that. General assurances.
Lengthiest thing ever. It was really great read.
Every year, we get the, uh, general assurances, which is basically our promise to the New Hampshire Department of Ed that we will follow all of the rules, policies, and protocols in order to qualify for federal funds. They instituted the review by the board and the, the initial of the board chair on every single page. And every, and the date of that, and then signing in two areas for the end. They, they started that, I think, eight years ago. Um, which is fine, which is, which is perfectly fine, cause we have nothing to hide. However, we did receive an update from the New Hampshire School Boards Association that while the, uh, there are nineteen school districts in the state, uh, filed suit relative to Title Six. And the battle of that famous um, promise for Title Six that went out, that again, I didn't find a problem with relative to uh, non-discrimination, because that's all it was. Um, the school districts that filed suit read it to be more about D E I, D E I programs. A judge has sided with that, that group right now, and so what Will Phillips has recommended is while that lawsuit is still in play, your boards may wanna wait until after May nineteen to consider signing this document. And there are two specific reasons why. Six A and six D, which are, uh, page one of sixteen is referring back to the Title Six Civil Rights Act. In this particular uh, area, it specifically states the executive order
Yeah.
of ending radical and wasteful government D E I programs and preferencing. The original Title Six announcement that we subscribe to did not
Yeah.
Big difference.
That was the first time I had seen that writing, and I was like, okay.
Yeah.
That's aggressive.
That's a big difference for me.
Me too.
And B, Title Nine, uh, the shift in Title Nine and the executive order defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government. I'm, uh, I'm struggling with that as well. And so my recommendation, even though we included this was for you to be able to review it. You'll know, I've already initialed and it's D. I would have to redo it because the date will change. All the dates have to be the same. So, uh, if we were to do this, say, May twenty-first, I would have to and if you change it, they send it back to you, and they make you do the whole thing over again. So what I wanted to do tonight was have the board gave the opportunity to review it. Those are the only two areas that, um, I took umbrage with. All of the policies that are required, we have. And this actually is a mirror of policy D A F, which you have in your packet, which we've up, updated three times this year to match this requirement. So what I would recommend is if the board wanted to make a motion to, um, approve some resubmitting this for having the board chair sign it after we re- receive information from the School Boards Association on the nineteenth, it would save having to have another meeting.
And then I can just sign it. Depending on what it looks like.
Yes, exactly. So if it comes back and, and, and Will says, oh, I don't recommend signing that, because this is what's happening. Then we have, we'll call a special meeting. Cause it has to do with federal funding. And so at that point, we have to make bit of a gotcha.
So we need a motion for me to decide, to wait and sign the
For you and I to sign once we receive
Once we see the school board.
School Board Association.
Yeah. After May nineteen?
Yeah.
Back in that, May nineteen? I was gonna say, Maria, did you get that? I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I got most of it.
Yeah, and, and he specifically wrote, uh, N H S P A is encouraging boards to take as much time as possible before determining the path that best suits their respective communities. As the return of the general assurances is not required until June first. We are suggesting that boards defer action until no earlier than May nineteenth. By which date, N H S B A will provide an update of any additional events or general information that might inform a board's final decision. For boards that have regular meetings scheduled between May nineteen and May thirty-first, that should not present a problem. For boards that don't, you would have to either make the, or, uh, pre-schedule a special meeting closer to the end.
So we have the motion, and the second, was there any, just more discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So we will wait. So D A F in our reaffirmation, reaffirmation of section of our business. Can remove that?
I would table D A F. Cause it's a direct, um, correlation to the program assurances.
Yes.
But D A B, D F A, and E H A V are all annual reaffirmations.
Yeah.
There was no need to make any language changes or updates, so the board could pass those as a slate, say those.
Are you guys agree on that?
Yeah, yeah, so removing D A F from the
From the group, yeah, from the reaffirmation. Part, so this would be out, and it would just be these three.
And then reaffirming the remaining three.
So I need a motion to reaffirm D A B, D F A, and E H A V.
We will make a motion to reaffirm D A B, D F A, and E H A V.
Second?
Sorry, I was pressing it on. I'll second it.
Any discussion to those?
Yeah, we already did.
Yeah. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And then we have, we, um, need to give Dr. Ryan the hiring authority for the summer. Um, so I need a motion for
I'll make the motion to give Dr. Ryan the authority to hire
I'll second. And you'll just be informing us of it.
We would, we would, we send the typical personnel reports that Maria provides for you. And then we would do the full slate of them in August. Thank you.
Um, second to that motion, I did, did you? I'm sorry. Um, any discussion?
We just have a question.
Go ahead.
Summer, when does, when do you want that to go into effect?
That would be as of tonight.
As of tonight to the August meeting.
I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
Until August.
We don't mean June.
We do. We do. We don't mean, we generally don't mean July, unless we have to.
Yeah, but just in the event that, uh, Mr. Rother, Dr. Bremner forward a finalist to me, say next week. I would love to be able to sign him then.
Have to wait. Cause we're getting to the end of the year.
Especially cause usually people have
All right, so all those in favor? Aye.
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 And any opposed? So moved. All right. So that was, uh, my app. Uh, we did the travel club, policies, final readings. Um, so I need a motion to ac- to accept A C A, B B B F, I M G B, J F A B E, J I, J I C D, J J J, J K A A, J R A, and K E E as final readings.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. I'm, so we're, um, so we're opening up for discussion. I'm gonna apologize, I didn't have these questions last time, cause I wasn't prepared at last meeting. So I did have a question on the first one, and I hope I wrote it down somewhere.
A C A C?
Yes. I wrote, I have a question, so. Guessing, I wrote a question somewhere on here. Oh, so in the, on page fourteen of this, on, under six. So it would be B six. Um, there's a blue part that says need to establish this, did we?
The district's policy contains additional language regarding appointment of decision maker. Can be optional language, ordinarily the building principal shall service the initial decision maker. That is the superintendent consultation with Title Nine Coordinator shall appoint an initial decision maker. So that would be Jane, myself deciding who the, how, what's the, um, what's the investigation team look like? This was for our, this was for us, this note was for us. We have training coming up again in July at Wildly Star and Peters on Title Nine Investigation Training, since it reverted to the twenty twenty. One of the things that was in the new law, the twenty twenty-four, it was a lot more loose. You didn't have to have all of these separate roles. Now we're returning to having to have separate roles. I can't be any of those roles, because I have to hear the appeal. As our Title Nine Coordinator, she can't be the decision maker, so we have to work out who's on that, who's gonna be serving in those roles. We'll be doing that in July.
He, he just turned in two to me.
So there'll be, there'll be an update to this policy, and we've done that then.
Um, yeah, so in other words, that blue language will just merely state what the positions are.
Right.
Not the person, but the positions that serve as
Yeah, so I guess my question was, we can approve this without that information in there, okay?
Yeah, because that's operational.
Okay. All right, then. And I M G B, do we need, do we need?
Oh, you know what, let's go to that one, because that's a totally optional one, I wanna
Yeah.
I definitely want you to
I was like, I was just like, do we, we don't do that generally?
So this is a sample, the, uh, the difference between a service animal and a therapy animal.
Oh, sweet.
This, this was, this was our favorite conversation.
And this was, this was direct, directed toward therapy.
This is therapy animal, so this is, um, in the event that a, uh, a, a teacher would like to bring in a pet that calms anxiety, that, uh, is good for, for students, for that calming environment, it's just a policy around that. Other districts have requested it. Um, I know Morgan Branis has brought her dog once or twice last year. Um.
Yeah, our old counselor in Keen, she brought her dog every day.
Yeah.
This seemed, when I was reading it, it seemed more like therapy, like you're gonna introduce a dog or something, and you're gonna, like, this kid needs therapy, he's gonna, you're gonna provide that therapy with this dog from a trained professional. That's how I read it.
Sometimes counselors do, though.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Usually it's not a normal routine visit weekly with a counselor for therapy in a school with a service animal or, or a therapy animal. But it may be like, I think at a therapeutic farm where they go ride horses, because it's therapy, there's all kinds of other animal therapy. This one was, I think, the intent of this was other school districts wanting to have that ability to bring, and it says it has to be certified. The dog has to have it, so, um, you have to have a, a, a certified animal. And it mentions dogs, and we know that. Um, and so that's the only, that's the only reason, but it's, I don't think it's establishing a full-on therapy program. At least, that's not how we're visioning, that's how we did, we did not read it that way as a policy.
I look at it as having a dog come in and students can read to the dog.
I look at it as having a dog come in and students can read to the dog.
I was thinking this is a whole like system in place for like therapy and animals.
You overthought it too.
I was reading a lot of policies, so I was in deep with all of them. Then my other question was, the individual who is responsible for handling the therapy animal. Are, if it's not like a teacher that's already in the building or are they having that, are we getting background checks on that person? Cause it's not stated here in the.
That's our.
We would have to get a certificate of liability insurance.
If it was someone else not employed by the district. As far as a background check, if they're visiting the class for the. And they're in the presence of adults and students, we don't need a background check for that. If they're doing, if they're a designated volunteer where there's something repetitive, then we would absolutely have a background.
Yeah, I was gonna say. I was a class mom and I had a background check.
It just wasn't listening to like the requirements of the. People, that's always, that's why. Again, I went deep.
I love it.
Alright, those are my only questions in the holder, so thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything? Did I get a motion? And I asked the one. And then the discussion, that's right, thank you very much. Um, so all those in favor? Aye, any opposed, so moved. And we are in other business.
Can I bring up one thing I didn't bring up before? Really quick, really quick. Um, I, I was hearing, I believe board members even told me that when you make payments on the um, the Titan food service thing. You can only do a hundred and fifty, it's four hundred and fifty now.
Oh, good. I only did one fifty.
I listened.
I know, but I was actually just looking and I was like.
Three entries and I'm thinking.
No, it's six dollars each time.
I raised it. It was as easy as saying, can I raise it?
Perfect, thank you.
Did you like my check? Did you see my check? I realized I hadn't gone on for a minute. And we owe five hundred. I'll go in right now.
Yeah, I went in and was like.
Gets it down to a certain amount. Listen, I'm gonna tell you what, all three of those kids got a yelling because they eat breakfast at home, then they were getting ice cream, they were getting breakfast, they were getting lunch, they were getting ice cream.
I know, I need to look, cause that's Aubrey's or like.
That's another thing you will find, um, they were getting through the rules. Erica had told me she goes, she says. You cannot get an a la carte, which is ice cream drink cookie, if you owe a balance.
Some of our problem names.
We, we took care of that.
Buying cookies for the table. I'm also sending snacks in with you, I don't need to also be buying rounds of cookies. You get a cookie. Okay, she's so generous.
That was it, that's all.
Alright, is there any other business to be conducted by the board at this point? So, um. Did I miss, oh no, now we're getting into the committee reports. Alright, does anybody need anybody here to say?
I thought he had that under people.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty, great news, thank you for that email.
Yes.
He's mad at me.
Oh, Roger, the rooster.
Roger, Wayne's rooster, I'm trying to get Clayton to put him away and he is literally murders us daily. And uh, Clayton cannot get him, cannot close the coop up because I'm telling you, he's going into the coop, he's killing it. And this morning, I'm like, what is happening? Why are all the chickens out and not in their run? And he's like, well, I wanted to go let them out. And Roger attacked me and knocked me over, so I was like. And he's not nice.
He seemed fine when I was. I'm just saying.
Committee reports, get back on track. Um, budget committee is me, we last met on four sixteen. Uh, named our officers, wrapped up the season essentially, I don't have no idea when the next meeting is. Um, community connections, I'm gonna try to post or make a couple of posts of year-end dates and stuff for events and whatnot. If there's any other, anything else, let me know.
Do you want to just send a brief thank you?
I did that already today. I sent it out and I, I linked the reformer article.
Beautiful, oh, that's who was there last night.
Right? He was over on the left by the. Oh, was it? I shared, I shared a news report, I thought it was Bradrow reformer, it could have been Sentinel.
I didn't see. Sentinel this morning, but.
Now I'm wondering which one it was. I get both of them. It was the Sentinel, it was a Sentinel.
It was.
Yeah, thank you to Sentinel.
They're good to us.
They are. And they've been following that story for a while. Alright, um, facilities and maintenance was, is Wayne, unless Jane knows of anything.
We have not met, um, however, I, I can tell you that Nate is still following up with, cause we, um, last time reported, we had the lighting companies come in.
Oh, right.
And so, um, Nate has been following up with them to get more information, clarify a few things, because we wanna make sure we're looking at apples to apples.
Right.
Right. Yep.
That's gonna be a great. Um, HASP, I heard you had a meeting.
Yep. Because of the. I don't know how to word it here, the. Uh, funding issues going on. The, the wishy-washiness of it all.
I sent my letter.
Good, there we go, that's what they're asking. She did give our numbers of how we're, how our school district is using HASP and we have fifty-nine percent of our elementary students. Uh, using our HASP program and eighty-two percent of our middle school students using HASP, which. Comes to sixty-seven percent of our student body using it. Um, they talked about how. Their performance of Shrek that they've been working on went really well. They started up their girls on the run with twenty-one girls signed up with five coaches. We. Oh, oh, and they had. What did they, what she said, crap, I didn't write it down because I was meeting. Um, they said she had, she had it in, somebody came, did an inspection or walkthrough. And they did, they did like a great job, they passed.
Grants were submitted in a timely fashion.
Yeah, they were impressed with a well-oiled machine, they said. So, if you see it on Facebook about the after-school funding, go and fill the form out and sign your names. Yeah.
But now I don't really remember hitting submit.
Well, go and do it.
I might need to do that again. To make sure.
I don't know if it came up during the HASP meeting, but we are secured through um, seamless summer. Option to provide the snacks for the community slash task program this summer, so. It'll be a breakfast and lunch.
Cause that was an issue last year, wasn't it?
It was, but we are, we qualified, we didn't have it the year before.
Okay.
Um, and we had it last year and under the qualification that we came in under, which is like a rural network type thing, we're, we're five years now. Yep, wearing your chip.
Oh, good.
Alright, legislation, of course, there's a ton of stuff happening there. Just some. Minor stuff.
Minor?
They did, um, it's, will likely not pass the reduction in inadequacy, so that, that's good news.
You know, been suing the state for how long?
It's been hard to keep up with all of it.
Yeah, no, it's, to be honest. That's, I was actually trying to do that today and I was like, I give up, I'm not gonna be informed.
And it was, it was rejected by pardon sign, so that was good to hear. Um, the budget caps for schools will likely not go through this.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
Two, will not go forward for twenty twenty-five is what they're saying.
What's that one?
The budget caps for school spending.
But we were under it.
So that's good. Those are the two I wrote down real quick, there's obviously all sorts of. Stuff happening, I encourage everybody to keep up with the New Hampshire School Board Association's list, because they do a great job. Of informing us every week about what's going on. They're in the crossover stage of it right now still, I think, so.
Yeah, the vouchers. Million dollars a year, yay. That's so much money.
And by twenty twenty-six, it'll be, you can, no matter what your income is, you can apply for it. Twenty twenty-six, there's one version, twenty twenty-six is one version, twenty twenty-seven, so it's like.
I can't wrap my head around us being willing to spend a hundred million, we can't invest. Which goes for everyone, but.
Yes.
voucher programs, let's have at it.
And it's over budget every year, but no matter what they budget for.
And that's what Arizona was talking about, remember?
With the limit, with the, getting rid of the limit of who can apply for it, it's just gonna. Yeah, and it's getting used for things. There's no oversight to it, so it's not getting used for what it's intended for. And they don't care. Yeah, so it's a lot, it's a big mess as far as I'm concerned with that, but that's just, okay. Personnel committee, we met on May sixth. We talked about staffing updates, current position, open positions. All the letters went out to the teachers and the other letters were out this month.
Yeah, I'm hoping by the end of next week, so we can get most everybody.
Everybody else out. Perfect. Man, I think that was pretty much it. Yeah, our next meeting is June twenty-fourth at four thirty. Um, policy committee.
Uh, we have a meeting coming up next week or the week after. It's in my calendar.
Oh, is that the rescheduled one? So do I need to be, is that the ten AM one?
Thank God for these meetings, huh?
It'll be a light slate, but I have some wellness policies that you were going to give to me.
Yes.
We'll have DAF at that time, that's already at the board level, so we don't have to worry about it. And there are two others that I have.
So it might be a quickie.
Yeah.
I don't know, I might add budget transfer.
Of course you would, of course you would, Jane.
And what's the other one? Donations, because the law changed, we wanna change with it.
Yes.
I just keep forgetting about, I'm sorry.
You're like, we should just always be able to accept them.
Any amount. Um, select board representative, those guys are here tonight, did, did the select board have anything they wanted to bring to the school board or? No?
Oh, Jason Walter being late.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're good.
I know, I finally looked at my phone and I was like, oops, where are the SAU? Since you're here. Yeah, you came.
Cause we had the public hearing, so we did it, we just did it then.
One thing that of interest, um, has to do with the bridges, the two bridges, and we are now having a discussion. Uh, with the commissioner. Because the, the biggest impact or the biggest concern for the town. Is the policing of the area of the islands. With the drug usage in the homeless camps. And the town is adamant that we don't want it, that it's gonna use our resources.
Right.
But the bridges are designated to be historical, so that's an issue. But we are now going to be communicating with the commissioner and see if we can do something about that. So hopefully if things go well, that uh. Those bridges may be coming down. This is the point of the discussion.
No, it's a bummer, we can't do something cool with it, but somebody has to decide to invest a ton of money. It'd be great, but we're funding. Yeah, so it's probably better to just take them down.
I know that there were some environmental concerns with taking them down too, and that being an issue and more money too.
You know, the discussion of getting uh, somebody to, to lease it. But then what happens then, as you say, that you commit to a several ten-year lease, so what happens after that? Now you're back to square one again.
Yeah.
And um, so um.
Yeah. I know Bradrow's been talking about it, they had.
People going down there, then you're putting people's safety in jeopardy, um, you know, with the huge needles and homeless camps. And um, emergency response, it's just.
Yeah.
Are you already finding that they're already camping?
Yeah, I was gonna say, kind of said that was.
Yeah.
A big topic at the PB.
It's a bummer.
Well, I mean, and that's the even want Tasticat now.
Yeah.
I didn't realize I went off, you know, we like to race going up Wantastica, so we take all the side trails and. Took a side trail and was like, oh, I shouldn't have been this. So they're definitely, yeah, there's a lot of that all over that area.
It's definitely an issue.
And with the nice weather, I believe they shut down the actual homeless shelter, don't they, for the summer? I'm pretty sure they can't stay overnight in the summer, so it becomes more of an issue as well.
I remember they've given them tents before, like at.
I don't think they are gonna do that anymore, cause then it.
Yeah.
It increased those issues, so definitely need something.
It was a couple of years ago, I think. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, thank you. Um, strategic planning, that's me and Kendra.
Nope.
I mean, Kayla. So we kinda talked about it with Dr. Ryan's, um, do we need to talk about it anymore at this point?
You don't have to, no, uh, I've given a copy of Desireed Outcomes to everyone, so everyone has that. SLT is gonna take it on from here and we'll try to bring some. Solution back in June, that will continue to work on it this summer, we'll have it ready for the fall, because. The goal is to start moving through some of the lower uh, cost or no-cost strategies in the low hanging fruit. And then budget for the others.
Right, yeah. Alright, tuition exploratory committee. Anything?
No, not that. No, I feel like that one we like paused.
We did, yeah.
Until.
Till June thirteen.
Right, yeah. Yep, so that's a pause.
Alright, uh, wellness.
We meet quarterly now, right?
Oh, sorry.
I was like, she's thinking so hard about this.
I, I was actually, I was thinking about tuition.
I was like, I didn't think it was that deep.
Because here we've made public what the tuition may be for, and you will need to make a decision on a tuition. For anyone else, because remember, we took a lot out, so just that's what my mind was going on when.
We generally do that in August or we do that before then?
Anytime before she starts to be there.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm sorry, my mind was going back and forth on all that.
Trying to backpedal.
Wellness, yes, we are quarterly, we are done for the year. The last meeting, what we did is we kinda went through, um, we had put together um, a report for Dr. Ryan because. Um, as part of our charge would be that, um, we would have a report for Dr. Ryan, um, by June of every year of the different wellness activities. And so I put pen to paper and then we wrote all over it, so we will be. Updating that um, for you, but we are, we're done for the, I think we have five maybe this year.
The policies.
We approve the policies to move forward, yep.